I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. This is a regular meeting for Tuesday, August 15, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you please take the role?
I will. Tim Hale.
Here.
Stephanie Nowers. I'm expecting D. McKee, Robert Yant.
Here.
Moki Two.
Here.
Dmitry Thonoff.
Over here.
Ron Bernier.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Okay. Is there anything the members would like to pull from the consent agenda? Yes, Assemblyperson Two, your light's not on, sir. Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to pull RS 23-088.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other item anybody would like to pull? And let the record show that Assemblyperson McKee arrived at 6:02. Hearing none and the agenda is approved as presented. And you'll all stand. Katie, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the minutes from a preceding meeting on, what is it, 7/18, I guess, 23. Is there any changes in the minutes? Okay, hearing none and the minutes are approved as presented. The next item is agency reports. Do we have anybody from any of the cities? Okay, I don't see anybody. Katie, you're up. You did an excellent presentation today at the Wassila Chamber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was lovely to be there and talk a little bit about schools. Good evening, Mr. Brown, members of the Assembly. For the record, I'm Katie Gardner, Deputy Superintendent for the Matsu Borough School District. Thank you very much for keeping time on the agenda for the school district to provide an update. Today is a very timely update, as it was the first day of school for a vast majority of all of our students. And if I had to sum it up for myself, it would be a little bit of a sigh of relief, but I'll provide a little more detail than that. The first day back is always a unique operational challenge. You have staff and students who are getting back into the routine of remembering what it's like to be in school. And when we're talking about, you know, 18,000 students and about 2,500 staff, really, today went very well, I'm pleased to report. A few updates that I wanted to make sure to share with the Assembly, and then, of course, if allowed, I can take any questions that anyone might have, are just some things that have been happening over the summer and some also good news from today. First is, for those who may not be aware, the school district and the Matsu Education Association did reach a collective bargaining agreement. This is the group that represents all certificated staff, so all teachers, counselors, related service providers. That agreement has been ratified both by the association membership as well as the school board and will take effect July 1. One of the great things about the agreement is it's a full three-year agreement, so we will have a collective bargaining agreement with teachers for this year and the next two years. In addition, I am thrilled to be able to report that we had full service for transportation today. Thank you. I feel like it's worth a round of applause. It was not a perfect day. We have about two students who are still making their way home, but we know that having full service was the bar that we wanted to make sure that we were able to reach, and we will continue working to make sure that that service is on time and reliable and dependable for all of our families. We do have some drivers out of state who are supporting to make sure that we have full service, but I was pleased that we had all buses running today. We focus a lot on Durham's contract for the core area, but that includes our buses in Glacier View and also bunker and bunker up north. We're all running at full service today. Finally, just an update for the Assembly on our enrollment. So as of this morning, we had 18,364 students who had completed their registration process. Our projected enrollment, as you may remember, for fiscal year '24 is 19,530. So we have a little over 1,000 students to go, but this is exactly where we typically are for the first day of school. For those who don't remember, our count period is the four weeks in October, so we will continue to have students who come in between now and then. We feel pretty good about where those numbers sit, and we are really about within 100 students of where we were on the first day last year, so right on target. The last thing, just as a reminder, we do have a regular school board meeting tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock at the central administration building. So thank you to the Assembly for your support and glad to have the first day in the books.
Okay, questions? Any questions, comments? Okay, all righty, thank you again. Do, let's see, do we have a report from the State of Alaska? Where's Jennifer? Can you wait just a minute until we round up Jennifer?
She knows you called her name.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, all right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Manager Brown, Members of the Assembly, Todd Smalden with the Governor's Office. I first wanted to thank Katie and the Matsu Borough School District for their successful first day. Surprisingly enough, when their buses are running and things are working out well for them, I also get fewer phone calls. So thank you for that. And I do have, with your permission, Madam Mayor, I have a presentation from the Governor, a proclamation that I would like to give tonight.
Okay, just a minute. No, not Todd. Don't get Todd's picture.
No, don't take a picture.
Get the other guy's picture.
I'm going to turn the microphone around so I can face the other direction.
Okay, all righty, Jennifer, you there? Okay, all right, thank you.
So as most of you know, the Matsu Borough was part of a settlement that's related to opioid settlement money. And as part of that, the Assembly authorized a task force of community members, and that task force was led by Deputy Manager Hayes. The citizens, Matsu Borough citizens who participated, I believe I have this correct, is Michael Carson, Carl Soderstrom, James Savage, Don Dever, and Leslie Chisholm. And what I wanted to do tonight is to present a proclamation from the Governor to Mr. Hayes. So, Mr. Hayes, if you could please come forward. Mr. Hayes, I first got to know you as part of the Police Powers Task Force that we did a few years back. And I know from that experience that you are an incredible leader and a great facilitator of conversations. And I also participated in one of the meetings that you had on the opioid settlement money. And so I wanted to present this to you from the Governor as an official proclamation. It is an executive proclamation by Governor Mike Dunleavy. Whereas fentanyl is a highly addictive synthetic opioid that is 50 times more potent than heroin and 100 times more potent than morphine, and it is made legally and used pharmaceutically, but has also become a prevalent substance in counterfeit pills and is frequently added to other substances such as heroin, methamphetamine, and cocaine. And whereas Alaska is experiencing a sharp and tragic surge in drug overdose deaths, partly because of even a minimal amount of fentanyl, the amount that can fit on the tip of a pencil can cause an overdose. One pill can kill. And whereas the fentanyl epidemic in the United States is a serious public threat, with illicit fentanyl poisoning rates currently at the highest level in history. And whereas it is becoming more common for individuals to unknowingly use fentanyl, which has led to the Drug Enforcement Agency issuing a public safety alert seeking to raise the awareness of significant nationwide surge in counterfeit pills. And whereas we can help save lives by making Alaskans aware of the dangers of fentanyl by working with law enforcement to prevent drugs from coming into Alaska and by reducing stigma surrounding drug use so that people can find resources to prevent overdose deaths, connect to treatment, and be healed. Now, therefore, I'm Mike Dunleavy, Governor of the State of Alaska, do hereby proclaim August 21, 2023, as Fentanyl Prevention and Awareness Day in Alaska and encourage all Alaskans to take a proactive role in educating themselves on the dangers of fentanyl because overdose deaths are preventable if we take action together. Please report any suspected illegal drug trafficking or other crime tips to the Alaska State Troopers by texting the keyword AKTIPS followed by your crime tip to 847411. And this will be dated on the 21st of August. Thank you again, Deputy Manager Hayes, for your leadership and participation.
Thank you.
This is a total surprise, but I want to give the credit to the five committee members on here and especially to the 257 citizens who responded to our survey and those who attended the three public meetings we had. They're what's really made the needs assessment a valued, I think, document for the future. And we'll be able to use that not only for the money that the borough gets, but hopefully then for the money that the state gets as well. And that's our needs assessment that they created. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jennifer, for...
And just one last quick comment. I can take questions if you have any, but I was told by one of the committee members that of all the public comment that was given, there was only one comment out of, as Deputy Manager Hayes mentioned, almost 300 comments. You know, like, "Let them die." Only one. And what that tells you is that the Matsu, as a community, understands that. This is, fentanyl in particular, is not, it's not just a threat for those who misuse drugs. It really is one pill can kill. With fentanyl poisoning as a reality and any illicit drug these days, it's important that we kind of set aside the stigmas and work together as a community to deal with this. So again, thank you, Deputy Manager Hayes and the task force members. I don't know if anyone has any questions for the Governor's Office. I'm happy to take them if you do.
Any questions, comments from the Assembly? We pulled it off.
Thank you for your assistance in pulling this off without Mr. Hayes knowing.
Yeah, I don't think he had any idea at all.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Todd, for always being here. The next item on our agenda is a report from the Joint Assembly and School Board Committee, but I don't believe that they've met. But thank you, Katie, for bringing this up to date. Are there any public relations reports? Okay, I don't see or hear any. Mr. Brown, do you have a report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be brief. One of the conversations that's come up since the Assembly passed the resolution to convert the Port McKenzie rail extension project to a road. There's been some questions from a couple of our state delegation members about what that could mean and why we would want to do that, particularly from members that represent that district that the port resides within and that corridor. So I talked to that Assembly member and the mayor and the deputy mayor, and I'm suggesting an Assembly special meeting at the next regular meeting on 9/5, September 5, and that we do that at 4:00 PM, just to set aside some time to have a conversation. We'll invite those delegation members to come in. We would invite, obviously, the Governor's Office and the Alaska Railroad Corporation to join us so that we can have a conversation about why we might want to convert that from a rail and what that means and allow the Assembly the opportunity to ask some questions and have some additional dialogue, since there have been some concerns from some folks about moving forward in that direction. So I would suggest that to the Assembly. If you have questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer those.
Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
September 5 is a bit of a struggle for me to make. Is September 12 an option?
That would be before the joint Assembly School Board meeting.
Yeah, we're open. What we were trying to do was keep it to not adding another meeting day. So that's why the 4:00 PM, it could come before another meeting. We just wanted to set aside some time to have that conversation. So I'm open to whatever the body desires to do.
Did you say that the 12th was the joint Assembly School Board meeting? And is that going to happen here or will that happen over at their facility?
It's going to be in the chambers this time.
So I think if we moved it to the 12th for Stephanie, it wouldn't... I mean, I don't think it'd be an inconvenience or any more than it would be on the 5th, so.
So what, yes, Assemblyperson Hale, go ahead.
Yeah, I am not going to be physically present on the 5th, but I should be able to call in. So whatever you guys decide is fine, but I figured I ought to let you all know I'm not going to be physically present on the 5th.
Okay, what about the 12th, sir?
I shouldn't be back.
You should be back.
I should be back by the 12th.
Okay.
Is there any objection to the 12th?
Okay, so is there any objections? Yes, Assembly, okay. So then we will set it for 4:00 PM on September 12, and it'll be here in the Assembly chambers. That agreeable to everybody? Okay, Assemblyperson Two, go ahead.
Will the public also get an invitation to this meeting?
Yes, it'll be a public meeting.
Correct. It will be advertised like a normal special or any Assembly meeting, correct?
Thank you.
So at all of our meetings, we have to have audience participation, so, you know, there'll be an opportunity for the audience. And I anticipate that will be the only item on the agenda as of now unless something, you know, earthshaking comes up that we would need to add it, right, Madam Clerk? Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay, do you have anything else, sir?
That's all, Madam Mayor.
Does anybody have any questions of the manager on anything? No? Okay. Mr. Attorney, do you have a report, sir?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've got the clerk's report. It is in your red folder. At the last Assembly special meeting, the Assembly scheduled a meeting on October 24. I did send out an email to the Assembly explaining that the Assembly chambers is not available because we have the election going on and training going on in reference to the Community Cleanup Continued Meeting. So I was hoping the Assembly wouldn't mind rescheduling that from October 24 to November 14.
Is there any objection to November 14? Okay, the only thing I would say is that probably should have staff reach out to all of the community council people to inform them so they'll be aware of that.
And just to clarify, it would be at 6:00 PM also. And then one more thing, Madam Mayor. On December 5, we have a special meet, or excuse me, a regular meeting scheduled. However, AML is happening at that time, so I was hoping the Assembly would go ahead and just cancel that meeting.
Is there objection?
It would be the first meeting in December, December 5.
Is there objection to canceling our first meeting in December? Okay, I don't see any objection, Madam Clerk.
And that is all I had, Madam Mayor.
Anybody have any questions of the clerk? Everybody's got those dates down and stuff? Okay. The next item on our agenda is citizens and other correspondence. Are there any comments on the citizens and other correspondence? Hearing none, then they are presented. Madam Clerk, could you read the IMs, please?
IM 23-179 informing the Assembly of the addition of Tyler payments to the borough's current suite of Tyler software in order to better serve the public for online payments and streamline internal processes. IM 23-182 reporting of conclusion of bid number 18104 to BDO USA for certified public accounting auditing services. IM 23-183 informing the Assembly of the manager entering into a terms purchase agreement with a lease fee to purchase by application the Alaska Division of Lands lease number 65469 for the fee simple estate of borough-owned lands.
Are there any comments on the IMs? Okay, hearing none, they are presented. We do not have any persons to be heard. Next item then is public hearing, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 23-065, an ordinance amending the Beverly Lake Lake Management Plan to allow for electric motors and 15 horsepower or less motors on non-motorized days. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star 3.
We have staff.
Good evening, Kelsey Anderson with the Planning Services Division. So the ordinance in front of you is amending the Beverly Lake Lake Management Plan that was adopted in December of 2022. So as you probably remember, there were some amendments that were made to the original plan that was put forward as a way to give a compromise to the lake owners to have some days as motorized and then some days as non-motorized. So at the beginning of the summer, we started receiving calls from the residents when they started being able to recreate on the lake again. That there was some confusion over being able to use 15 horsepower and under and electric motors because during the public meetings and in the original plan that was presented, everyone really agreed that those were a compatible use with like swimming and kayaking, stand-up paddleboards. So they asked us to reconsider putting that back into their plan as kind of originally intended. So really, what happened was there was just kind of a nuance that we missed in bringing in that amendment to the plan. So they've asked us to update their plan to allow for 15 and under horsepower motors and electric motors on all days of the week instead of just being able to use them on the motorized days of the week. So this is kind of code cleanup for the plan. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions to the staff? Okay, all right, thank you. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone is welcome. Do we have a sign-up sheet? We do not have a sign-up sheet, but that doesn't matter. You still can testify. So if anybody would like to testify in ordinance 23-065, they're welcome to come forth and testify for up to three minutes. Caleb, do we have anybody? We do not have anybody online, okay? One last chance for anybody in the audience. Seeing no one, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Deputy Mayor.
I move to adopt ordinance 23-065, and if I may speak to it.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I'll take ownership of this. This is my fault. We tried to find a happy medium, or I did with my amendment, and that I think did make 80, 90% of the people on the lake happy. Originally, they had all agreed to allow 15 horsepower the whole time. That was never in question. And so when staff and I worked on my amendment, we just missed it. It was an honest mistake. So I hope everybody will, you know, support this. They would all like to have it, it seemed like. So I didn't ever talk to one person that didn't want to have 15 horsepower or less. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Is there any objection? Okay, hearing no objection, the legislation passes.
Ordinance 23-071, an ordinance accepting and appropriating 33,300 in anticipated project income during fiscal year 2024 for the rail extension project from Port McKenzie to the main line with accompanying resolution 23-078, a resolution establishing the scope of work and budget for anticipated project income during fiscal year 2024 for the rail extension project from Port McKenzie to the main line.
Okay, staff?
Through the mayor to the Assembly, Scheinheindl Finance Director. Before you, is it accept and appropriate of anticipated revenues for the rail extension? These program revenues have to be accepted and appropriated into the project as they were derived from the project, and this project was built with funding other than the boroughs.
Questions to staff? Yes, Assemblyperson, yeah?
Where is this income coming from?
This income comes from the leased properties out there, those farms that we own. Also, it can also come from sale of property out there that the borough owns.
Thank you.
Uh huh, Assemblyperson Hale.
Yeah, I didn't get far enough in this thing to see or didn't have enough background from previous versions. But is there any significant changes to the scope of work that we're putting the money back into?
Through the mayor to the Assemblymember Hale, no, it is not. Most of it goes towards our employees' wages to manage that property.
Yeah, I saw the scope of work, but I couldn't remember what was on it before. I didn't know if it had changed or anything like that, so thank you very much.
Further questions or comments to staff? Okay, thank you. I'll now open the public hearing on ordinance 23-071 and resolution 23-078. We don't have a sign-up sheet, okay? Anyone is welcome to address the Assembly on either this ordinance or this resolution. Do we have anybody online? We do not. One last chance for anyone here. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Assemblyperson Two?
Yeah, I move to adopt ordinance 23-071 and resolution 23-078.
Okay, any discussion? Any objection? Okay, hearing no objection, the legislation passes. I don't know if I should do that. We have a missing Assemblyperson at the table. It's not at the table.
If I could, Madam Mayor, was he here to vote on that last item? Because I've got to mark that if he was not.
I asked just for an objection, and he's not here, so... Oh, here he comes, okay. Sir, you're going to, it's very important that you're here at the desk for motions and activity that's going on. Okay, so I'll ask one more time. Is there any objection to the passing of ordinance 23-071 and resolution 23-078? Okay, hearing none, the legislation passes.
Ordinance 23-078, an ordinance accepting and appropriating a grant in the amount of $44,000 from the Alaska State Department of Health and Social Services for the continued management of points of dispensing and medical countermeasures with accompanying resolution 23-087, a resolution of the Assembly approving the scope of work and budget for a grant in the amount of $44,000 from the Alaska State Department of Health and Social Services for the continued management of points of dispensing and medical countermeasures. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star 3.
Staff report?
Through the mayor to the Assembly, Scheinheindl Finance Director. Before you, as a State of Alaska Health and Social Services grant to cover supplies, printing services, software, personnel costs that allow for dispensing and medical countermeasures, we're asking you to accept and appropriate this money.
Okay, any questions to staff? Okay, I will now open the public hearing. Thank you. We have no sign-up sheet, okay? Anyone that would like to address the Assembly on ordinance 23-078 or resolution 23-087? Do we have anybody online? We do not have anybody online. Questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 23-078 and resolution 23-087.
Okay, discussion? Any objection? Seeing and hearing no objection, the legislation passes. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 23-079, an ordinance establishing an advisory board to review and make recommendations to the Assembly regarding water body to the Assembly regarding water body setbacks. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Staff report? Mr. Attorney?
Mayor and members of the Assembly, the ordinance before you here does, as the clerk mentioned, establish a formal advisory board to review and make recommendations to the Borough Assembly regarding water body setbacks. This was an idea that was talked about last, two meetings ago when the proposal for water body, amending water body setbacks was here. This body is largely modeled on the Road Service Area Task Force Body, which some of you may be familiar with. Applicable provisions of Borough Code already apply to this body. Roberts Rules of Order do apply. Membership will be seven, as drafted before you tonight, membership will be seven members as feasible. It does give the mayor and the Assembly flexibility. If you decide you have a really good person and like there's not a spot for him, you can. So it'll be one member from the Planning Commission, one member from the Fish and Wildlife Commission, one member from the Matsu Salmon Habitat Partnership, one member from the home builder lending or real estate community, and three members at large. And as I mentioned, the ordinance says, nothing in the ordinance obligates the mayor to make specific appointments or the Assembly to confirm specific appointments. So it's aspirational, you're trying to get there. Also, in this ordinance, the administration is directed to publicize the creation of the board and provide information on how to apply. Applications for consideration must be received no later than September 1st so that the work can, the mayor appointments can be made, confirmed by the Assembly, and then they can get to work. The scope of the duties is that the Water Body Setback Advisory Board is empowered to review and recommend any changes to Borough Code relating to water body setbacks and related issues. These related issues should include variances, non-conformities, how to deal with structures built in violation of prior ordinances, possible remedies for structures in violation, and any other issues that the board thinks is relevant. So it's a pretty broad mandate to kind of go forth and tackle the problem. It will prepare a written report, and the Chair will present the report to the Borough Assembly no later than March 19th, and then the board would dissolve on March 20th. Also, the final thing is that the, the Planning Department will staff the board. As I understand it, the Director plans on kind of leading the board. So we heard earlier about how Mr. Hayes has been successful. It's now Alex Strawn's turn.
I don't know if we'll be able to get a proclamation from the Governor for you, but...
So that's the staff report for the board before you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the staff report? Yes, Assembly person McKee.
Would you repeat how many members of that seven-member board are actually fish and game folks?
So one person, as feasible, the membership should be from the following groups. One member from the Planning Commission, Borough Planning Commission, one member from the Matsu Borough Fish and Wildlife Commission, one member from the Matsu Salmon Habitat Partnership, one member from either the home builder lending or real estate communities, and then three other members at the discretion of the mayor and the Assembly. They're just called at large. So they could be from those groups, they don't have to be from those groups, they could be anybody.
I think the way this was originally discussed...
Madam, we, we probably should have the public hearing first and then it'll come to the Assembly for discussion.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Assembly person hours.
Thank you. Through the mayor, there was a list of things that you said were in their purview to review the water body setbacks revisions. Is that in the ordinance? Because I'm looking at it on my screen and I just, I don't see that language.
Section five, page two of three on the bottom, says scope of duties. Page two of three of the ordinance, section five of the ordinance, scope of duties.
Sorry, I'm looking at the IM, so it's on the...
It's in the ordinance.
The ordinance, okay, thank you.
Okay, are there questions about the ordinance? Okay, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We do have a sign up sheet, so if you'll give us a minute first. Okay, so the first person we have is David Palmer.
And Mr. Palmer, when you come up, if I can get you to turn the mic on. Nope, the one at the podium. Yep, yep. Thank you, sir.
So, Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the Assembly, my name is David Palmer. I've been a borough resident since 1980. I have several parcels of remote property on waterfronts around the borough. I have some mining claims on water bodies in the borough. And this is an extremely complex issue to me. And the State Department of Environmental Conservation and DNR have passed quite a few complex regulations with regard to activities around water bodies. So we'll make this simple. I'm in favor of this board. I think it's a good idea. I believe that a small setback against a geographic area, that if it were a state, would be the sixth state from in size, twenty-five thousand square miles. And we have so many different geographic and geological areas in our borough that I think one simple setback that would essentially eliminate riparian zones, which is where all the animals and wildlife basically live, I think that would be an overshoot. I think establishing a board that can yield comprehensive results to an issue and assist the Assembly and the borough residents in a good solution to issues would definitely be in the borough residents and the general standing and health of the borough itself would be a good idea. And so I am in favor of this. I do believe, as an example, where we have what I'm going to term urbanized zones, this might be a good idea, this small setback. But in remote areas, I don't agree with that. And depending on what type of animals and other wildlife live in certain areas, we may not want to do a short setback. So, and that's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
No, and the working group will have public meetings that will be advertised, so you'll be able to provide your testimony at that time if you so wish also.
Good, thank you. Thank you all.
So Greg, I'm sorry, Greg?
I think it's Graham.
Graham? Greg Bram?
No, he said no.
Okay. That has to be, is that Greg?
Yeah, that is. He just said no.
Okay, okay. Preston Williams?
Now, this was a little different than I thought it was going to be. I thought this was actually going to be discussing like a vote on it, not just creating a board. I thought this was the actual discussion.
Wait, can you, do you want to come up, sir, and state that on the record or no? Okay, all right. Dan Mayfield.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Mayor, Assembly and staff. My name's Dan Mayfield. I'm here to speak in favor of 23-079. The current process is just for approving water body variances is very cumbersome. It's expensive and it doesn't create a level playing field for everybody. I've been convinced for some time that, that some changes are needed in our water body setback regulations that we have. And I think the way that we do that is by developing, just as your idea is, develop a task force so that we can have a concerted effort and a collaborative effort at resolving the, the six hundred to a thousand setback violations that we have in the, in the valley now. And I think there's a way to do that. In fact, I'm convinced that there's a way to do that. And I would offer my services in the future if you so choose to avail yourselves of those services. I would look forward to accepting that challenge and, and working collaboratively with other folks to resolve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Gene?
Yes, my name is Gene Holt, H-O-L-T. Good evening, Madam Mayor DeBrees, Assembly, and anyone from the borough affiliated with the ordinance 23-079. We are at a very important crossroads with the future of our water. We are the largest boroughs, we are one of the largest boroughs in the state of Alaska, twenty-five hundred, twenty-five thousand square miles, including lakes, rivers, and streams. The time is now. The major part of the solution lies entirely with the borough. Besides the 50th anniversary of the seventy-five-foot setback, water body setback ordinance this year, today, we have property taxes due August 15th and also the public hearing before all of us on ordinance 23-079. The public needs assurance that finally the borough will address water quality and setbacks. We're getting there, but do need an ordinance that has more backbone than ordinance 23-079 provides. Here are some suggestions. The membership, number one, the membership of the water advisory board should have more knowledgeable members consisting of professional planners, biologists, engineers charged with water body protection. Extend the application process and solicit it. Number two, the timeline of the board should be extended not by March 1924 to present board report to the Assembly. Number three, the scope of duties is too vague. There is much to cover. Setbacks, riparian buffers, land use permits, future co-compliance, follow-through of violations with the Borough Attorney of enforcing and fines. Lastly, a coordinator-feliciter should be one hired outside the borough administration. I encourage you to vote no on ordinance 23-079 as it is presented this evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thanks, Gene. Linda?
I'm Linda Page, and I have comments on this 23-079. I agree that a board is going to be a helpful thing to put things together because there's nothing more important than the water quality. It's not a matter of left or right, Democrat or Republican. It's water quality for everyone in the valley forever. And, you know, much money's been spent on this in the past years, and we're doing it all over again. You know, these problems, I thought, were settled pretty much back in 1987, and now all these years, all these violations have come on. And how many? Eight hundred or whatever it is? And it's kind of sad to think there's been no enforcement of that all this time. The timeframe for this new ordinance, I think it's a little bit short because there are so many, many items to consider when you're trying to figure out a solution for the problem. You know, are you going to find the people that are in violation? You've got to figure out, do you have to figure out when the subdivision was made? Because that should be easy to do. When the bill, when the house was built, that should be easy to do. Was it a owner builder? Was it a contractor? You know, all those things, I think, have to be figured out for this stuff. And I, I do feel that fines should be applied for this because if you don't do something about it now and your rules in the future aren't strong enough, is it going to happen again? Are we going to go through this another, how many times? All this, you know, forever. I don't believe that on the board, that seven members is enough. I really think we need more people from the public and more input. You know, I don't have anything against real estate people, but I don't believe a real estate person should be on the board. When you think of the value of all these homes, and once this has changed, and if these homeowners can sell their homes, what are they, five hundred thousand, a million, fifteen, a million and a half? There's a lot of expensive homes out there, and a real estate person is going to think about the money from the commission. And so I don't know if they're going to consider the water quality. So I think you have to be real careful, you know, on who those members are going to be. There's just so much to figure out, you know, for this because it's been gone on so long. So anyway, those are my comments, but I have something else. My Assemblyman is Mr. Yount. And I'm lost for words at the pain I feel for what's happened. And I was at a meeting the other day and hushed about some of the comments I wanted to make. So what I want to do is since you're Assemblyman, you're my Assemblyperson, I want to have a conversation with you because you went to other districts, but you never came to mine. So that's what I want, because I want to hear your side of the story. Everybody was telling me to talk to you about the violation. So I'll give you a chance. I, I think I'm a fair person, but I'm deeply hurt at knowing that you're sitting there in that position and what you've done. And I want everybody to know that. It bothers me to no end, to know that this man represents me and the violations.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I don't like doing this.
Yeah.
But you don't know how it affects me.
Yeah.
And I'm not...
I'm sure you two can have a meeting outside of this.
Yeah, all right. So I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address ordinance 23-079? Okay, do we have anybody? We do not have anybody online. Okay, one last chance for anyone in the audience. Okay, that I will close the public hearing. And Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 23-079, and if I may briefly speak to it, please.
Sure, go ahead.
So, and I, I've mentioned this before, but it, I didn't, I didn't realize. So there's 674 people. We just got those finalized numbers, or I did, from staff a few weeks ago. But last March or April when this came about, it was because of someone in my district that was well within seventy-five feet, whose home was built way before the seventies or eighties legislation, right? So, and he was having some issues with clarification on grandfather rights and different things. So when I went to talk to the attorney and everybody about it, I was unaware until then that there were issues with that. I, I think there's a big misunderstanding I've never had, and I can talk to anybody about this on the record, and you're welcome to come to my personal home, but I've never been in violation of this. It's not even close. So it, but anyhow, my big question for this is, and I served on a working group years ago at the borough, it's probably been about five years or so, but we didn't have a timeline set when we started the working group, at least not that I remember. The, the timeline was that when, and there was fifteen or seventeen of us, it was for the subdivision construction manual, but the, the timeline was we'd be done when we got done. And so my question for this is, because I don't want to see it rushed, you know, this is forty years that those 674 people that were there before, you know, we don't have to solve it overnight, I guess, which is why I asked for the working group. So my question is this, if, if the group doesn't feel like they're done with their work by February or so, give or take, or at what point do they come back to the Assembly and ask for an extension? I know we can extend them, and I know, but there's a public process involved. So at what point would the working group want to declare their need for more time, I guess? I just want to get that out there so they know going into it if they need more time when to ask for it.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, do you have a reply, sir?
Yeah, and so the, the, March 19th is the second meeting in March. So if the working group needed more time, they could make a request through the Assembly or get a sponsor or through the manager or through the mayor to move a non-code ordinance to extend the time. You could introduce it at the first meeting in March and then have that public hearing and extend it on the second meeting in March.
Okay.
So they would need to know by probably last week of February that they would need more time. And then, of course, the Assembly would have to then grant them that more time.
Thank you.
Okay. Assembly person, hail.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two amendments that I would like to offer at this time. Start with the first one. I move to... I move to, on page three of three of the ordinance, strike March 19th and March 20th, and insert September 17th and September 18th. This would give them a year to do their work. If they get done before then, then, you know, kudos to them, but I think, you know, give them a year, and like I said, if they get done before then, that'd be great.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment, change the date? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
I'm all for it, but I'd just like to get the manager, Alex, to please speak on if, you know, what they think, so.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Assembly. Alex Strawn, Planning Director for the Borough. There's a lot of variables when it comes to forming a working group and tackling a big, complex issue like this. Big one being, at first, trying to get people to be on the board. I don't think that's going to be a problem with this one. We form it, we're going to lay out all the facts. It's a large, complex matter, and it's going to take a bit to digest it all. And then there's going to be a lot of different possible solutions to this, so I don't think it would hurt to have more time, but we could also, you know, it's nice to have a deadline so you can have some motivation to really work through it, so.
Okay, yes. Mr. Manager?
So, through the Mayor to Mr. Yount, and in the Assembly, just for consideration, like, if we're going to bum rush this, like, six months, I mean, I'm mindful that Alex's role as the Planning Department Director is as the Planning Department Director. So if, if we do this in a shorter time, he's going to have to pour most of his attention into this topic and this topic alone. That's going to have an effect. If we have more time, it won't be as rushed. He'll have an opportunity to manage the workload. So just something to consider. We'll do whatever the body wants to do, six months, a year, whatever that looks like.
Further discussion on the amendment? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Is there a set-in-stone sketch? Like, so when we did our working group years ago, we met bi-weekly, but have we decided that yet, or will that be something that Alex and the group determines when the time, once they're created?
Yeah, through the Mayor to Mr. Yount. I think we would leave that up to the group to just develop that rhythm, because you're going to have people that may have day jobs and different things, and we're going to have to work around those schedules, depending on who gets appointed.
Okay, thank you. I mainly just wanted to get out there, so, because I wasn't sure, and then, but that's glad to hear that they can decide, once they create the group. I'm all for the amendment. I think it's a great one. We do not need to be rushed on this. When I first brought this last year for a resolution, just to open up the conversation, I think it was last May, takes a year, two years, fi, I don't know, 10 years, we've got to get it right, so, however long it takes.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment? Is there any objection to the amendment? There are no objections, and the amendment passes. So you have before you the ordinance 23-079 as amended. Assemblyperson Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for the second amendment, I would move on page two of three to strike the words "from the home builder lending or real estate community and," or not "and," and replace them with the words "with experience in designing and constructing stormwater abatement best management practices." I have this for the clerks written down here. I will give it to her. In my mind, it's, we're not doing this for the developers and the real estate folks. What we're doing is we're trying to get people into compliance with the borough rules. And I think, you know, part of that is going to be these stormwater abatement best management practices, because right now, you know, you can, you can pave right up to the edge of the lake. You can put your lawn right up to the edge of the lake, and, and these, these stormwater abatement best management practices will be something of value for the borough in protecting our fish habitat, and that's a critical part of this, of this, of this ordinance, I think, is bringing people into compliance while getting something of value in return. So, that's my argument for it.
Okay. Okay, Assemblyperson Nowers?
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad idea. I, I don't mind, and I think it would be good to have somebody, you know, a home builder or lender of the real estate, because I think they're part of the solution. These homes are getting built in violation, and so figuring out how, how we get information and compliance out of those builders is really important, and so I think it's good to have them at the table. I think what you've mentioned is also important, so I'd like to offer a friendly amendment for discussion. Instead of replacing the one member from the home builder, keep that in place, but take one of the three members at large and make it a, what he said, engineer and has expertise in this kind of abatement.
Okay, yeah, let the clerk.
I just want to clarify, because you need to be amending the amendment that's on the floor, and if it's not, you have to vote it down and then try to make your own amendment.
However, I need to do that.
Okay, so maybe the clerk should read the amendment that's on the floor, so we, okay, so, and then we'll, everybody will know how they want to vote, okay? So, Madam Clerk, would you?
The amendment that's on the floor is to strike the words "from the home builder lending or real estate community" and insert it with "a one member with experience in designating and constructing stormwater abatement best management practices."
Okay, so that's the amendment. That's Assemblyperson Hale?
I would suggest to Assemblymember Nowers to, rather, as kind of the form that amendment could follow, rather than striking, simply insert "after" the word "and," and then you would also have to reduce the number of at-large members, unless you wanted to have an eight-member board, or increase the, the number of at-large members to have a nine-member board, because you don't want an eight-member board.
Okay. Further discussion, Deputy Mayor?
I'm totally in agreeance with Tim. I don't see any reason for a realtor or even a builder, maybe some do, but I do think it's very important for a lender to be on there. So when you start talking about, like, the gentleman that called me early last year was having issues getting a loan on his place, and he was the original owner of, I mean, he built this place in the 60s, right? So, I, I think when you start talking about clouded title, and all the things that come about with it, and working through that process, having an experienced lender will be absolutely priceless. So I just wanted to get that out there. However we go with the amendments is totally fine, but I do hope that that seed is protected, so.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment? Yes, Assemblyperson McKee?
Yeah, I, when this first came about, that we were going to have this commission, the only words I see, and maybe it was just my take on it, is, yes, let's do a fish and game bunch of people. Because I thought that would be mostly the people, because that is such a huge concern. And then when I see this, and it's like, one member from Fish and Wildlife?
You need to, I'm sorry, ma'am, you need to talk just about the amendment.
I was gonna, because, because Tim Recker had one thing, and then Stephanie had another thing, and so I thought, well, is this a place to discuss? If it's not, I'll wait until this amendment's done. I'll come back to it.
As you heard, the clerk told Stephanie she had to wait, so...
I'm sorry, I did not. I was just too into this. Thank you, I'll wait.
Yeah. So now, if you wanted to move and strike a different person or something that would take away his amendment, then that would be one thing. But, right now, it is striking that one member and adding this substitute member. Okay. Everybody okay? Yeah? Assemblyperson Nowers?
Thank you. I need to clarify, so, so, if, if we want to, if I want to add a person for the, that Tim suggested, the way I would do that appropriately is to devote, and I also would like the home builder lender real estate person, is to vote this amendment down and then make a separate amendment to add a person that is experienced in abatement, whatever the language was, he is, somebody who's experienced in designing and engineering these water systems. Is that correct?
Well, I think you have a couple options.
Yeah, tell me the best way, the cleanest, simplest.
If you're in favor of possibly Assemblymember Hale's amendment, you can go ahead and pass that, and then make another amendment, should you want to do that, and then make another amendment to add a different position, unless you do want home builder lending or real estate, and I'm not sure which way you want to go.
Okay, I am okay with home builder, real estate person, so I, I will vote my direction on this particular amendment, and I'll offer a suggestion next.
Further discussion on the amendment? Is there objection? Oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor?
I'm just trying to help simplify this for everybody that may or may not understand. I'm going to support Mr. Hale's amendment, and then I think we'll clean it up after that. So, I'm, I think it's a great amendment. It adds a very valuable position, and I think it's a great idea. We'll clean it up after that, and, yeah, so I'm going to support it.
Okay. Is there any objection? Oh, I'm sorry, Assemblyperson McKee?
I just want a clarification, so you're going to read this amendment so that we exactly know how we're going to be voting on it?
Okay, I'll have the clerk read the amendment.
The amendment that's on the floor is to strike "from a home builder," one member from a home builder lending or real estate community, and insert in its place "one member with experience in designating and constructing stormwater abatement best management practices."
Okay. Assemblyperson Fallon, go ahead.
So, what Stephanie tried to propose, or not, just hand sprightly, what Tim proposed.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, my only reservation, and I'm involved in construction one form or another, is we only, out of seven members, we have one person who's within that complete industry from construction to the lending and to the real estate, and it's not like that one person can really influence the outcome of the other six members. So I think that was a very reasonable, reasonable number to have on there, so I think we should, if we want to have another, I would support that, or take one of the three options, but to leave one designated person from that industry who actually involved in making or correcting these issues. So that's the reason I could not support that.
Okay. So is there objection to the amendment? You have objection? Okay, so, Madam Clerk?
If members in the room can go ahead and vote. Madam Mayor, it passes. Assemblymember Fanaf opposed.
Okay.
Did you want? Okay.
It wouldn't matter.
Didn't she ask for reconsideration right now?
I think we want to leave.
Oh, you're going to leave it? Okay, come on, I'm giving you some rope here to help yourself. Okay, Assemblyperson Nowers?
Thank you. Yeah, we've got to have some fun up here. So I would like to make an amendment to strike the words "three members at large" and insert "two members at large" in its place, and add a position for somebody from the home builder lending or real estate community, and if I may briefly speak to it.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I just, again, I think it's good to have one of those folks at the table. I agree with Assemblymember Fanaf, they're one of seven, but I, I want to see a solution that works, and if they're not at the table, to give feedback on, you know, home builders aren't going to hear about this program because you're not doing this, or, I mean, I am fine if it's a lender, I'm fine if it's a home builder, I just, the, the folks who are building and financing these homes need to be in on this, because we have 600-plus that are in violation, and a solution needs to be found that not only is enforcement, but also makes sure that the people who are building and financing get the word that these are the rules.
Okay. Further discussion on that amendment? Assemblyperson Hale, go ahead.
I would like to make a secondary amendment to change from two to four members at large, so it's a nine-member board.
Okay. So, discussion on changing the makeup from seven to nine? Yes, for, yes, Deputy Mayor?
I think that's a great idea. My only ask is of Alex, so will we have quorum issues, or is there no, I don't remember if the working groups require a quorum or not, because that could become an issue.
Yeah, they do.
So, that's my one concern.
We're going to, we're going to get them to sign in blood, so they'll all show up.
We're talking about going from seven to nine, correct? Thank you. And so my only, my, my ask of Alex and/or the manager, or whoever would be, just, how do you feel, would there be concerns with making quorum?
Go ahead, sir.
Through the Mayor, too, so remember, Yount, there seems to be a lot of energy surrounding this topic. People seem to be pretty passionate about it. I think we're, people are going to show up. And, and the thing to keep in mind also is that what you're discussing right now is the voting members. We are going to bring in experts from different aspects to talk about different things, so just realize that, just because if, if you have some specialty that's needed, they don't necessarily have to be a voting member. We can bring them in to get their knowledge.
Okay. Further discussion on changing to nine? Yes, Assemblyperson Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just say, in support of changing to nine, you know, we've got a lot of experts on the, you know, on the list now, and I think it's important for just regular folks to have a chance at one of these seats, and if we only have two seats that are at-large, you know, I think more, more at-large seats would give more, more regular folks an opportunity to sit on the board and have their input.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion on the increasing the size, number of board members? Yes?
I fully support nine-member board. That is a really good way to go, and especially like after Alex was saying, if he has people like Fish and Game, or engineers, or anything, come to the board meetings and actually speak up, I think that's an awesome idea. Thank you.
Assemblyperson McKee?
I like that, too, except that they can't vote, so it doesn't really help it in the final, they can vote, the people that are coming, and just, how do they, they're just speakers?
Yeah, you're right, yeah, just because they're experts doesn't mean they get to vote on our behalf.
Something, I don't even know now, I'm not sure when to jump in, but, I was saying before?
You can only, you can only go to nine now.
Right, okay.
So if it doesn't have anything to do with nine, you got to wait.
It has to do with the makeup of the nine, does that count? Okay, well, go ahead, let's...
Right now, if I can, because we're getting confused on where we're at. We're on a secondary amendment right now. We're on the secondary amendment to strike two at-large members and insert four.
Mm-hmm, got that.
That's where the discussion needs to stay.
Not on how the makeup is, but the numbers itself?
Just the at-large members right now. That is what's on the floor.
Okay.
Okay. Further discussion on that?
Not yet.
Any objection? Okay, so the secondary amendment passes, then we have...
Do you want me to say what the primary is right now?
Yeah.
The primary right now, which is on the floor in front of the Assembly, let me get my notes out, bear with me, I just put them up for some silly reason, was to strike three at-large members, insert four in its place, and to add one member from a home, from a home builder lending or real estate community. That is the motion that's in front of the Assembly right now.
So that makes a total of how many then, ma'am?
If this amendment were to pass, it would be nine.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I must have written something down wrong, because I thought we were going to just, you, you just mentioned there had to be one member from home builder lending or real estate, so does that mean that Stephanie withdrew her thing regarding the, the storm management? No?
No, that's already passed.
That's already passed, and that's an additional member.
Okay, okay, we're getting closer to what I want, but...
Okay.
So now we vote for this, and then I put in what I want.
Yep, then we'll recognize you later.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the main amendment? Any objection? Okay. Cheers. Go for it, lady.
Okay. When this all came up, my first reaction was, well, of course it should be 75 feet, and I talked to Alex, and there was a little bit of wiggle room in there, and then, and I, but my, my takeaway was, Fish and Game is going to come in here, and I was going to say kick whatever, but I'll just say move things around, because they're really important. That's, that's kind of, at the bottom line, they're kind of the, the canary in the mine kind of thing, the temperature taker of what's happening in our waters. And so I thought we would have, excuse me, I'm sorry, I thought we would have more people from the Fish and Wildlife Commission, but you put one member from Fish and Wildlife, one member from Salmon Habitat, they're, they're going to have to win, there's 80 other people, or what, how many, what do we got? Seven other people on there that they're going to have to convince. I, I don't know if the public perceives it the way that I did, but I was quite hopeful thinking that there would be more people taking the temperature of the project kind of thing. And I, you can't do that with just two people who are primarily interested in, in this habitat, the habitat aspect of it, the conservation aspect of it. So when you've got, like, these two folks out here, they're going to be Fish and Wildlife and the Salmon, and then you've got a couple of members at large, why? and then you got a couple of members at-large, why can't we have more people in, you know, that have that bent, that expertise? So, if I were going to do this, I'd say, okay, this is fine. So, the two of those, so we only got two members at large, or four members at large. I would propose that we have two more members from, that have a little bit more direct involvement and expertise in what this could do to the.
So, what do you want to, do you want to go to a 10-member board then? Or you want to take one of the members at-large and make another appointment from the Fish and Wildlife Commission?
At least that, I would say, too, but, because we got, we got two, how many or more we got out there at-large?
Yeah. Well, at-large can be Fish and Game, and now you're, with that, you're really going to be cutting down the people, the general people from the public.
Well, I'd like one more member, take one of these members at-large and make it one less there, and move that one member up to somebody who's more, has more expertise in what this could do to us in the long run.
Okay, so now, you want to cut the at-large to three?
Yep.
And then, the one person, do you want it from the Fish and Game Commission? Or do you want it just with experience?
I'd say Fish and Wildlife Commission, those folks are, that's what they do. So, that would be what I would put forward.
Okay, so that's your amendment.
Because that's still a pretty broad mix, but remember, you only got two in there. They haven't had much of a voice against all the rest.
Okay.
Just saying.
All right, so the amendment on the floor is to reduce the at-large to three and make that other position, so we'd have two from Fish and Wildlife Commission. Okay. Okay. Discussion. Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea also. I just, I would like to mention, because we're kind of, we're all over the place a little bit here, that ultimately, the manager and the mayor will make the final decision on everybody, regardless of their title or whatever. And I, I think it's fair to say, I think we all very much trust the manager and the mayor. So, you know, let's keep making adjustments. I think it's great, I'm glad we extended the timeline, I'm really glad we grew it. But it doesn't really matter what the layout of these are, because the mayor and the manager are going to pick the best people, I think. Attorney.
If I could jump in, Madam Mayor. Actually, it's, this is a, this is a formal advisory board, so this will follow the appointment process. The mayor will appoint, the assembly will confirm. And so, the assembly also can reject confirmations if you don't like names that are coming forward.
Okay, thank you for that.
While the manager may be involved in terms of talking to the mayor, and, you know, maybe kicking ideas around, these are mayoral appointments and assembly confirmations.
Okay, I didn't realize there was confirmation. I guess what I was just trying to point out is, you know, whether the at-large ones, two, three, four, the same people are probably going to wind up in that position. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Assemblyperson Powers.
This is, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a question for Assemblymember McKee. If you want somebody who has expertise in water quality, you could pull from the Fish and Wildlife Commission, but you could also pull, I mean, I think the more expert on that would be the Department of Environmental Conservation in terms of impact. So, I just wondered if you want to make it a second person from the Fish and Wildlife Commission, which I could, those folks are all volunteers, or if you want to make it somebody from DEC who comes from a little different perspective, but has a lot of expertise in water quality.
I'm okay with that, if you want to change that wording, because the idea is the same. They're taking the temperature of the environment, of the water, but the fish, yeah, that's okay. It's probably even better.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, I would go with that.
Can I offer a secondary amendment to change that to adding somebody from the DEC, State Department of Environmental Conservation?
Okay. So, discussion on the secondary amendment to change the one, the extra, the new position from Fish and Wildlife to a member from DEC? Any objection? Okay, we do have objection.
If I can get the members to vote on the secondary amendment. Madam Mayor, it passed with Assemblymember Fana opposed.
Okay, thank you. So, now, we have before us then the primary amendment that takes the at-large to three, and we add the new member to the DEC, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Further, any discussion on that? Any objection? Okay. We do have objection.
The members can go ahead and vote on the primary amendment as amended.
Primary amendment, or the primary?
Primary amendment as amended.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, it passed with Assemblymember Fana opposed.
Okay. Now, we have before us ordinance 23-079 as amended, and amended, and amended. I don't know, maybe I missed another amendment. Is there any further amendments? Any further discussion? Assemblyperson Powers.
Hey, we didn't, can you do a third amendment to an amendment? Probably not. I just, I had kind of an overall comment, and then I do have a amendment. You know, I think the speaker who spoke to that there is a lot of aspects to this was absolutely right. I think it's good to have a year's time. I think, you know, on that note, water quality is a really serious issue here. We had some of the worst king runs we've ever had. We've had that for years. The only place literally to fish for kings in the burrow was the tail race, which is affectionately known as Fish the Ditch. That's not kind of the experience that attracted me to Alaska in the first place. Our silver ends are terrible. We've got Wasilla Lake, Big Lake, that are listed as impaired. You know, the other night, we had Bowdenburg Creek, and they were talking about salmon being in there. So, you know, it's not, the building on the water bodies isn't the only thing, but your habitat is degraded by cuts, you know, death by a thousand cuts. I think the other thing that really this board should look at is, you know, this has been in place since 1973. We grandfathered people in in '87. Since then, thousands, we might have 600 out of compliance, but we have thousands of people who have followed the rules and are in compliance. So, the need to make sure that the solutions don't reward people who have flaunted the rules, and help people to not be out of compliance in the future as much as possible to make it on the record, so people know what the rules are, and they don't inadvertently violate them. So, my last amendment, it would be on, it's actually in the IM, and I might need to make it in the ordinance, too, but I'll start with the ordinance. So, on page two of three, at the end of section five, it would read, and I'll hand this to you, "To the extent possible, the advisory board shall identify possible solutions, identify ways to enforce and implement those solutions, and identify resources needed to implement and enforce those solutions." Oops. And just to briefly speak to it, I just think government in particular is great at coming up with solutions that sound good, like, we will enforce this rule, and we will do this, and it all sounds good. But if you don't have the bodies to go with it, and the resources to go with it, it, it's not a great, you know, if it's not, if you don't identify those, you don't necessarily know if it's a solution that's workable. So, this is just to ask, to the extent possible, and to put it on the record for the board, that we'd like them not only to look at solutions, but look at what it would take to implement those solutions, so they're really thinking through how we implement those.
Discussion on her, Assemblyperson Powers' amendment? Deputy Mayor.
I think, I think it's a brilliant amendment. I do want to just clarify something, because it's been said a few times tonight, that six-plus-hundred people are in violation. I think it's worth noting that six-plus-hundred people actually built before the legislation. They're not in violation, they're just stuck in this gray area where the spirit of the legislation in the '70s and '80s, I believe, was amazing. 75 feet's a great number. This whole thing started because there were 674, give or take, that were there before. And so, I just, I don't like to speak about them as being in violation. There's grandfather rights, it's just really gray on what that actually offers you. So, I thought that was worth noting. The other thing worth noting is, there's never been anybody trying to get rid of the 75 feet. If you don't want to build correctly, or you don't want to check a bunch of boxes that the working group will create, you'll still have to stay at 75 feet. To go within that, you'll have to check boxes A, B, C, D, whatever they may be, that the working group will come up with. So, it's just, so I just wanted to clarify, because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding, if that makes sense, so. But I, I guess back to the amendment, it's a great amendment, I think it's awesome.
Further discussion, yes, Assemblyperson Hale.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I tend to agree with the other two assembly members. You know, enforcement is always an issue. How do you enforce? What are kind of the mechanisms that you're, that you use when you're attempting to enforce these kind of things? When you look at, like, someone who possibly purchased a property cash from someone who had built there previously, and they want to do some renovations, they may not know that they're not allowed to expand the footprint. They can build up, but they can't build out. And if they start to build out, well, then, you know, how do we, how do we stop that? How do we nip it in the bud? How do we get people to, to, one, know the rules, and two, you know, follow them? So, I think, I think it's great.
Assemblyperson McKee.
It seems to me that in some of these cases, there must have been, I mean, I don't know, I'm not a contractor. I used to work for a mortgage lending company, and I also worked for a bank. But there were, contractors licensed, bonded, insured, and all that stuff. They got to know that stuff, they have to know that stuff, or they can't, I'm assuming they can't be licensed. I was talking to a title lady today, and she said, well, you know, there's so many exceptions to this sort of thing that it's impossible to do it. And so, but there's got to be a way to go back and determine some accountability for somebody said, geez Louise, let me roll the dice here, I might get caught, oh, well, they'll never do anything to me, or maybe I'll never get caught. There must have been some of that out there, because there always is. And then the idea that when this whole package comes before a lending agency, lending body, it seems to me there ought to be something in there that says they crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. So, I don't know if this.
Go ahead and address the primary amendment.
I thought it was. I'm not. I usually don't, oh, well. It's okay, thanks, Moby. What does, how does this not kind of dovetail into that? Because it's, I guess, more a comment on, on what this amendment is trying to accomplish. Thanks.
How's that going to me? So, this amendment is just so that when they're meeting as an advisory board, and they're identifying solutions, they identify the resources that will be needed to implement and enforce those solutions. And that can be education. It can be enforcement, you know, it could be, like, whatever they're thinking is the solution, it's also thinking about what resources we're going to need to do that. So, we don't just say, we're going to do this, and we don't know that we need four more staff people to enforce or implement it, or that we should do an education program. So, it's simply say, to the extent possible, they think of the solutions, but they also think of what the resources that would be needed to implement those.
Okay.
Okay. Further discussion on the primary amendment? Is there objection? There are no objections, and the primary amendment passes. Any further discussion or amendments on ordinance 23-079? Yes, Deputy Mayor.
One other thing that I'd like to clarify, and just because there's been people that have called and asked questions, and they're great questions. So, this will never, no matter what we do here at the assembly, this will never allow a septic system within 100 feet of the water, nor should it ever. That is the state's area of expertise. You have to permit that with the state of Alaska to go within 100 feet. There are systems you can use, treatment systems and stuff, they're very expensive. It can be done. Lots of people have done it, but you cannot put a regular septic within 100 feet. That's state law, there's nothing we can do here to change that. So, I just wanted to clarify that, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any objection to ordinance 23-079 as amended? Passing. Okay. I don't see any objections, so legislation passes. Okay. The next item on our agenda is audience participation. Oh, wants a break, okay. All righty. So, why don't we come back about 7:40? Okay. So we are at audience participation and we do have a sign up sheet. So we will ask those people first to testify. And then if even if you haven't signed up, you still are welcome to. So the first person under audience participation is Tyler Acklestone.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tyler Acklestone. I'm the Vice President of Alaska Safe Riders. And I am here tonight to tell you guys a little bit about the organization. I think Mike Buck had already done so, but this is in regards to AM 23-091 for the $5,000 to help our funding for motorized safety. So a little bit about us, and I think Mike may have touched on this. I wanted to let you guys know, in conjunction with Alaska Safe Riders and the Iron Dog in particular, we have spread last year alone, 500 helmets to rural Alaska, to many communities from Nome to Kotsuvue, Bethel, into McGrath, throughout multiple of these communities. And really with this, we're trying to bring it back home here, do an initiative. I was fortunate enough to speak at Palmer High last year, Chugiak High. We went over and were participating in a, the Alaska Safety Council Conference and multiple other things. But with this, it's just, it's a great opportunity. Love to have you guys' support of this. And it's doing a lot of good out here in the valley where we, you know, trying to spread the knowledge to these kids, adults, whoever it may be, for the importance of safety in the community, especially with in regards to motorized safety. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Deborah?
Thank you, Mayor DeVries and the Assembly. I just wanted to speak on behalf of this request that we are trying to get out in the community and raise awareness. And we recognize every day that you can drive down the roads and you see these kids on four-wheelers or snow machines and they're jumping driveways and they don't have helmets and they're bare skin. And I have been the first on scene multiple times and picked up these kids with broken bodies. And it's a horrifying experience. And anything we can do to help raise awareness about this is, I believe, a great effort. And so we really appreciate your consideration of this ask and want to assure you that we're going to get out into the schools. And you'll hear lots more about this in airways and in social media. So we appreciate your support. And if you have any questions, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan? Tyler?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I was actually here to speak on behalf of my employer, McKenna Brothers. I was, I'm here to advise you due to the following breaches of RSA contract, McKenna Brothers has given a 90-day notice to cure or contract will be terminated. The borough has refused to pay McKenna Brothers. Windstorm remediation work, the borough required McKenna Brothers to perform the work that we did perform. The borough has unlawfully forced McKenna Brothers to endure significant extreme costs to remove illegal snow put in the right of way by homeowners with no enforcement, no ticketing, and no fair compensation for doing so. The borough has failed to approve a appropriate COLA increase. And there are several other issues. McKenna Brothers considers these material breaches as intent to terminate for cause, a 90-day notice to cure or find another RSA contractor.
I'm sorry, sir. I don't know if you, did you say your name for the record?
My name is Jonathan Tyler.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Fisher?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Brian Ficklin. I operate Ficklin Construction, a current RSA holder of four contracts in the Matsu Borough. During the 2022-2023 season, the Matsu Borough forced Ficklin to incur significant extra costs to remove snow illegally put into the right of ways by homeowners. No enforcement, no ticketing, and no compensation to the invoices that we have submitted have been yet to be made. The Matsura Borough has consistently for the past year reinterpreted and made additional changes without change orders or road maintenance contracts. Along with other issues, Ficklin considers these material breaches entitling it to terminate for cause. I'm asking the Assembly to get involved with all RSA contracts immediately so they can be brought to a resolve in a very time-sensitive manner and prevent contracts from being returned in the next 90 days. Please step up, get involved in these before we have to figure out something new for snow removal this winter. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm David Spain. I'm just here to ask the Assembly to get involved in these unpaid invoices. Winter's coming. None of, none of us contractors want to give, hand it back, hand back our contracts, but we can't withstand another winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Assembly. My name is Jackie Goforth. I am here to speak again about a book that is in the library of the Matsu Borough. Now, I have been running up against a whole bunch of people who think that the First Amendment doesn't have any limitations put on it. Whatever you do and whatever you say is completely okay. But you cannot run into a building and scream bomb or fire without having a problem with the law. You cannot, you cannot go up on a stand and say you're going to keep your oath and then lie without having a possible perjury case. You cannot write that you're going to assassinate someone and have it not go, a 75-year-old in Utah's had that problem. You cannot do that with your First Amendment rights. And one of them is, you cannot distribute pornography and indecent material to a minor. There is a, there is a court consequence to that. Now, there is a law with the Alaska State. It's 1161.128. It has three parts. One of them's simple. If you're over 18 and they're a minor, it's obscene. It's against the law. Number two is the contents. Does it have obscene stuff in it? Is it lewd? Does it have an A? Does it have an anus, genital, et cetera, et cetera? Number three is the hard one. It's called harm to child. Now, harm to child has three parts too. And I am tired of people who think I can't read and can't comprehend English. Now, part B says, "The material is harmful to children," and there are five parts to it. The material is harmful to children if, by the way, it has a conjunctive in that. The conjunctive is "or." "Or" means there's an alternative. If the material fails to have value, serious value in artistic, it's harmful to children. Or, if the material fails to have value in literary, it's harmful to children. Or, if the material fails to have value in political, it's harmful to children. Or, if the material fails to have value in political or educational, it is harmful to children. Or, if the material fails to have value in scientific, it is harmful to children. It doesn't mean if one of them is bad, the other four shore it up as a whole. What it means is, if one of them is bad, the material is harmful to children. I have already had this book checked with an OB-GYN, a forensic scientist, and a medical doctor. The science in it is completely hideous. The anus is not the entrance to the bowels, just as the mouth is not the exit to them. This book is a violation of the law. And I will be down here every two weeks until someone perhaps forms a committee to review why these librarians have the ability to just buy these with no one checking on it. And then, they actually are paid to defend them when someone brings this sort of thing to them. And then, the directors here are paid to tell you you don't know how to read the law. Number B is very succinct. It's harmful to children if one of those fails to have serious value. And quite frankly, artistic is pretty bad too. Not unless you want the David statue by Michelangelo to be holding his unit.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the Assembly? Okay, do we have anybody online? We do not have anybody online. One last chance for anybody in the audience. Okay. With that, I will close the audience participation. Madam Clerk?
Action Memorandum AM 23088, awarded bid number 24026C to Swickard, Alaska II LLC, in the contract amount of $332,075 to purchase seven light-duty trucks, AM 23089. Approval of contract extension for Contract 22080P with HDR Engineering extending the final completion date to June 30th, 2024 for the Urbanized Area Corridor Study, AM 2390. Approval of Contract Amendment with Tyler Technologies in the amount of $92,746 to move from the current cloud-based software NovaTime to Tyler Technologies' cloud-based software. Time and attendance with the advanced scheduling for borough timekeeping and scheduling needs. AM 23091, authorizing a grant to Alaska Safe Riders in the amount of $5,000 for creating advertising regarding safe riding. AM 23092, approval of Contract Amendment Number Five to Contract 22139B with Dirtworks Incorporated to extend contract completion date for the Butte Elementary School Water System Replacement Project to September 30th, 2023. AM 23093, awarded bid number 2412B to H Construction in the contract amount of $135,000 to construct repairs to the ice rink roofs in Willow and Talkeetna. AM 23094, awarded bid number 24025C to Swickford, Alaska II, in the contract amount of $141,005 to purchase three light-duty trucks. And AM 23095, approval of Contract Amendment Number Ten to Contract Number 21P with Besic Durst Sizer Architects to extend the contract completion date from Construction Administration and Commissioning of Houston Middle School to January 30th, 2024.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read into the record by the clerk.
Is there any objection? Okay, so, Madam Clerk?
Resolution 23088, a resolution authorizing the manager to pursue a direct recipient designation from the state of Alaska to receive Federal Transit Administration funding and authorizing the submission of a grant application for Urbanized Area Formula Funding under 49 USC 5307. Madam Mayor, it was pulled by Assembly Member Two.
Okay, Assembly Member Two?
I move to RS 23-088, but I have to recuse myself because I believe I may have a conflict.
Okay. All righty, please excuse yourself.
And Madam Mayor, if you can actually get Assembly Member Young to move it after Assembly Member Two exits the room.
Good point. Deputy Mayor, will you move the resolution, please?
I move to adopt Resolution 23-088.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes. On conflicts, I've always had the person state it. And I think I know what it is in this case, that Mr. Two's family owns transit. But I never heard the actual reason for his conflict of interest.
Okay. So, she would call him back in and have him state it afterwards, state it? Or what would be the best?
If it's going to change how Assembly Member Nowers votes, I would have him come back in the room and state it. If it's not going to change how she votes, I would go ahead and vote on this and then have him come back in and state it.
Okay.
That's fine with me, just as long as it's on the record.
Okay, good. Thank you. So, discussion on Resolution 23088. Any objection? Oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor.
I just wanted to get this out on the record. I'm okay moving in this direction as a community so long as the City of Palmer and City of Wasilla participate. And that will be definitely something that I'm going to be speaking to a lot in the future. So, we, the Matsu Borough should not be doing all the heavy lifting. And I will, I'll speak to that more in the future. But I do hope to see the City of Palmer and City of Wasilla get involved. Thanks.
Yeah, through the mayor to the Assembly. We will, as a staff, reach out to the cities and have conversations about what this local match might look like. The IM specifically speaks to the need to develop a local match funding plan. We have work to do in that arena. This doesn't obligate to the Assembly, obviously. When we move forward, assuming that FTA funding flows to the Borough, the Assembly will still have to take action to accept and appropriate funding. And at that time, staff will have to bring forward a local funding plan. And in the meantime, I appreciate that getting on the record because we want to start those conversations with the cities because it's new for all of us. It's part of that urbanized area designation in terms of a change in the percentage of the match from a 90%, 10% to a 50-50. So, we will do that. And you may hear some rumblings or conversations around that. So, we will begin that conversation.
Okay. Further discussion or questions? Is there any objection to passing Resolution 23-088? Seeing none and the legislation passes. And then, I guess she's on the way to get him, I guess. So, we'll wait just a minute for Assembly Person Two to come back. Assembly Person Two, if it was requested that you state the reason for you asking, for your conflict, please?
My daughter is involved with Valley Transit. And I'm not sure if that's exactly, if I do or don't have a conflict. But I want to make sure that if I do, that I'm not involved.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. All righty. So, we do not have any unfinished business. There's no veto. Madam Clerk?
Introduction for Public Hearing on September 5th. Ordinance 23081, Ordinance 23082, Ordinance 23083 with the company Resolution 23089, and Ordinance 23084.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to introduce the legislation as read into the clerk, read into the record by the clerk and set the public hearings for September 5th, 2023.
Is there discussion? Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the legislation has been introduced. Vacancy report, Deputy Mayor?
I move to confirm the mayor's recommendations as follows. Parks, Recreation, and Trails Advisory Board resignation of Nick Let LeFleur. Planning Commission resignation of Mike Rubio.
Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the Assembly, the vacancy report has been approved. We have no other new business. We have no, oh, I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
I just had a technical question, I guess. Can we actually object to someone's resignation and like force them to continue serving on the board?
I guess you can. Whether it would mean anything or not, I don't know. Unless maybe the attorney has a better, a more legal explanation than my flippant one.
No. What it does is it just formalizes the removal, after which the person can't change their mind. And now, the seats formally open can be filled by the mayor.
Okay. And while we're on the vacancy report, maybe I should say the clerk's office very soon will start the advertisements, right? For the, is that correct? You want to talk a little bit?
I know that the legislation directed administration. And apparently, that would be me. So, I guess we will be doing that. I didn't know that was me, but I can do that.
Okay.
It wasn't very clear, apparently.
Yeah. And for those listening as well as here, if you're not familiar, the, on the Borough website, it is matsugov.us and backslash boards. And there's application places there. And I would assume that this working group will be advertised on there. It seems like to me that's what we did with the task force for. So, then, so applications can be start to. And I know we've had some public testimony. But I will leave it up to anybody that has volunteered to take their own initiative and submit. So, we have their information and their experience, et cetera. And so, we would do that. So, if you've been getting phone calls about when it's going to be available, you can return those phone calls and tell them it's time now. So, we've been telling everybody to wait because we weren't sure exactly how the Assembly was going to massage it. And you certainly massaged it tonight. But that's your right and your responsibility. So, I'm just teasing all of you. So, we have no reconsiderations. There's no executive sessions. And so, we will have mayor and Assembly comments. Assembly Person Fana, parting comments? Oh, okay. Assembly Person Nowers, parting comments?
Three items, just a leftover from our meeting the other day where we talked about oil prices, just following those since July 3rd. Alaska North Slope crude from $75 since July 3rd to $89 on August 15th. So, that's a almost $15, $14 swing. That's almost $1 billion. So, just like I said, I got to be in my bonnet about counting on the state to come through for us when they heavily rely on oil prices. And a little change can make a big difference. Was super happy to host a Brazilian exchange student this past week from the city of, city-state of Palmas. We had a lot of fun showing her the beauty of the valley, went up to Hatchar Pass, did the Muskox Farm. She really stumped us with the English language. She said, "What's the difference between when you say 'the other' and 'another'?" We're trying to explain that. And we had a lot of fun with her accent. And sometimes, don't say the word "beaches" with a Brazilian accent. It gets you in trouble. I told her to watch that one. But it was wonderful. There was about, I think, 10 exchange students, Uganda, Belgium, Brazil. It was fabulous to have them. And they got a lot of tour of the valley before they go to their final homes. The Belgian student staying here and going to Palmer High. And then, the State Fair starts on Thursday. I hope everybody's planning to go and go a lot. And hopefully, the sun will shine on us.
Deputy Mayor, parting comment?
Yeah, State Fair. Pioneer Grappling Academy, I think this will be our fourth year in a row hosting the wrestling tournament at the fair. And if anybody's bored and wants to come watch some kids beat the tar out of each other, it's a great place to be. It's indoors too, so if it rains, it'll be all right. When I was a kid, we actually did it outdoors, rain or shine. So, I've stated multiple times since last winter that we, we had the best snow removal in the community by a mile. If you look at what the Matsu Borough received compared to the predicaments that the City of Wasilla, Anchorage, and the state was in. And, you know, I don't want to speak for other cities that I don't reside in. But I think we got our, I think we got some really good work. And I really hope that we can figure out a way to keep this all together. Because it's going to, it's going to be a darn long winter for our residents if not.
Just so the Assembly knows, the candidate filing begins Monday and it lasts through Friday, September 1st. Packets will be available starting tomorrow, either in the office or on the website. But they can't be turned in until candidate filing opens on Monday.
Mr. Brown, parting comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will try to start with something positive. But I do want to provide some context for some of the testimony provided earlier this evening. I do agree with Mr. Young. I think our contractors, our road service area contractors have done a remarkable job last winter and have over time. There's no doubt about that. And certainly, I think some could make an argument for inflation and lagging costs. I mean, we have fixed firm price contracts, some of which are in year four of a five-year contract and were bid out before COVID, right? So, in 2019. Yes, there's a COLA adjustment. I've heard all sides of it. I get it. But I want to provide some context for the homeowner's snow claims that have been forwarded to the Borough. Just to provide you a general overview, I'm not going to speak to our response to it tonight because we haven't yet formally responded to the contractors, although that will be coming shortly. Of the 16 road service areas, one contractor who has two road service areas submitted no claim. The others did. Of the remaining 14 contracts, so the 14 road service areas, and I'm going to say this slowly because you're going to go, "What?" Seven claims, so seven of the road service area claims exceeded the value of the entire contract for annual maintenance. So, if we paid hypothetically $200,000 a year for maintenance of, for an entire year, the value of the homeowner's snow claim for that road service area loan was in excess of $200,000. For three road service areas, claims are over two times the entire annual maintenance contract value, twice as much. And the average increase for homeowner's snow claims, so I went back because I was like, this, this apparently, I mean, I don't know if it became a new problem this year. But we haven't had these numbers in the past. So, I asked Purchasing to go back and look at 2021, 2022, the last two years, and look at what we paid in purchase orders to contractors for homeowner's snow issues. Issues where the homeowners take snow off of their private property, put it in the public right-of-way and complicate our ability, in other words, raise the level of effort that the contractor's required to clear the road and make it safe and contract compliant. The average increase for homeowner's snow claims is 30 times the combined totals for the previous two years. So, I'm happy to have conversations about issues and claims. But that is remarkable. We're talking about a total aggregate claim of $7.1 million as opposed to $231,000 that the Borough paid out in the previous two years for this issue. I'd hate to finish on a negative note or a not fun note, but that's what we're dealing with. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Mike, would you say that again? Just that last part?
The whole thing?
No, just the last part. What do you?
Oh, it's, so what we're talking about is homeowner's snow claims of $7.1 million. Our total annual contract cost, if you looked at all 16 road service areas, is $7.2 million. Now, I want to be clear because I appreciate you opening that back up because a comment was made about the Borough not enforcing. I don't think you go from $231,000 in two years to $7.1 million in two years and start fining people left and right. I would absolutely say that is the wrong approach for us to make. So, we haven't put our head in the sand. We started looking at this problem. Do we need to do a better job? Absolutely, we need to do a better job if it's going to be a problem on this scale. But I would argue, it's a new problem on this scale. And going to homeowners and citing them for doing this, because it is, you know, I get that there's code that speaks to what's legal and what's not with regards to taking your snow off your property and put it in the public right-of-way. But I don't think going out and issuing a $150 fine out of the gate is the right approach. So, we did send out letters educating and informing the public where we knew of issues. And we need to do a better job of that. We need to talk about that with homeowners in advance. I think there's no doubt we should do some of that work. But this idea that we're just going to start lobbying citations But this idea that we're just going to start lobbying citations, I don't foresee, I don't foresee me directing that at all. So, we've got work to do. We want to work with the contractors. We understand their concerns. We've met with three. We meet with the fourth one tomorrow, one-on-one, diving in, talking about their concerns and issues. But honestly, I, I mean, I'd just say, $7.1 million, 231,000, it's not rocket science.
Further questions or comment? Okay. Mr. Attorney, parting remarks? Assemblyperson Key, parting remarks? No. Assemblyperson Two, parting remarks?
Yep. So, I was pretty quiet on the Water Body Board and discussion tonight. And that's because I believe that all the amendments that were made on the table up here were great amendments. I really believe that we all interjected some really good, or you all, interjected some really good information and, and actually moved this bot, moved this task force forward. So, I say thank you to all the Assembly folks that added amendments. It was, it was wonderful. And that's it.
Assemblyperson Hale, parting comment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was actually kind of hoping somebody from Alaska Safe Riders would still be here at the time of comments because last time, when Mr. Buck was here, he, he took off right after his, his, his comments. And I didn't get the chance to say hello to him because he was a teacher at Valdez High School when I went to Valdez High School down there. So, hello to Mr. Buck. It's nice to see that he's still out there doing good work for kids.
Parting comments? Assemblyperson?
Thank you. Dear Lord, please forgive us for our shortcomings. May we learn from our mistakes and to follow your word. We thank you for all your love and grace. We pray that you help those that are hurting, sick, those that are addicted, lost, and hungry. Lord, you know their needs. Please bless our valley and state. May we love our neighbors. May we pray for our enemies. May they follow you, Lord. May we pray for our leaders and first responders, our military, our families, and loved ones. May we always keep you first in our life, Lord. Thank you. In Jesus's name, amen.
So, without any objection, we will adjourn at 8:12.